Hello everyone, and welcome to our Village of Trustees meeting for Monday, September 9th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Will everyone please rise for the pleasure... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it. Would everyone please remain standing for a moment of silence for all the victims of 9/11 and all the victims that are still happening every day dying from the effects of 9/11? Thank you, please have a seat. Roll call of trustees. Trustee Albert.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Corrigan.
Present.
Trustee Ho.
Present.
Trustee Osborne.
Present.
Mayor Curly present. Upcoming meetings. A regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 7th to 2/24 at 7:00 PM. A regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 4th to 2/24 at 7:00 PM. And I have a motion for approval amended for August 5th, 2024, please. Motion, please.
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by trustee Osborne. Can I get a second, please?
Second trustee Albert.
Second made by trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Treasurer, please.
Good evening, mayor and board. We have two items on the agenda. One is a resolution, as you know, you passed a local law that allowed the village to have community events and be funded by monies, both donated and by the village. And you set aside a certain amount of money. And what this is going to do is commit those funds, which means that whatever donations are received, less any expenditures made or any money you've put aside, will be there the following year. The balance will be there for the following year, so it doesn't just fall down the fund balance. So that's the first resolution, commit the funds.
So that way we'll keep these events going on and on, because as we get donations, we'll keep them in the funds and we'll keep them, keep rolling on.
Right.
I'm taking a motion to commit funds for community events, please. Motion, please.
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan. I got a second, please.
Second trustee Ho.
Second made by trustee Ho. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The other one is, back in July, we, the village board adopted the project 2025-001, which is the road improvements phase 14. And you set aside a budget for that amount of those projects. And we were informed that a few additional streets could be done, and we do have the bonding capacity, in other words, bonds that were authorized but not yet issued. So we're looking to increase the project dollar amount by that. And again, it would be financed by that debt.
Can I please have a motion amend project 225-001, road improvements phase 14, please? Motion, please?
Motion trustee Albert.
Motion made by trustee Albert. Can I get a second, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Second made by trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, mayor.
Mr. Genito, can you stay up there and better, please? At this point, it's, you know, sad news for the village, but good news for Mr. Genito, okay? I have, Mr. Genito will be retiring from the village, but coming back on, resigning, resigning slash retiring from the village and, you know, coming back as a consultant, all right? So I'd just like to have a motion for a resolution accepting the resignation of village treasurer, Michael Genito, please. Motion, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by trustee Osborne. I got a second, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Second made by trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And we do that with, with deep regret on this in some ways, but there's other good things coming too, so we'll leave it at that. Now, I also have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with government R&amp;D Center LLC for consulting services, which is a firm that Mr. Genito has. And I have a motion, please?
Motion. Oh, sorry. Motion trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert. Can I get a second, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Second by trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Again, Mr. Genito, I, I, um, one of the reasons we don't have a big crowd at these anymore is because they have faith in you. Huh? Faith in you and what you're doing, okay?
Mayor, I'd like to thank the mayor and the board for the many fine years of service that all of you have given to the village and your support and guidance in helping us pass through all the difficult times that are before us, that have preceded us. And as well, you know, the former mayors and boards that I worked for here. Everyone's done a wonderful job. I want to give credit also to the rank and file, everybody who works for the village, all the department heads, all the employees. They're always out there, many of them volunteering their time when it's needed. And if nothing else, they're devoting their time and their efforts to everything this village needs, no matter what it is, not just the finances, but everything else that we do. So with that, I just want to say thank you to everybody for some great years here. I didn't realize initially when I came on board in 2014, it was only supposed to be for a month, I think. And so it's been a long month.
That was the game plan.
Thank you.
You didn't say what month, that's why.
I like to keep my options open, you know?
Thank you, Mike Genito. At this point, I just want to talk about myself and Mr. Genito. We interviewed, you know, people for the new position of treasury to fill out the remaining term of time. And after, you know, discussing with different people, interviewing different people, we met, we met a gentleman named Greg Smith, and I'd like to come up to the podium if he would, please, okay? We interviewed him and we find him to, one, be very competent, experienced in the field, and a good personality that I think can, then while he's still, Mike is a consultant, he has his ears too, or he has the village board's ears, but we'd like to, at this point, appoint Mr. Smith to the position of treasurer for the remaining term of office. So can I please have a motion appointing Greg Smith as treasurer for remaining term of office? Right, yeah. I will, I'll actually be appointing Mr. Smith and then the board would confirm it, please. So I have a motion for that.
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by trustee Osborne. Can I get a second?
Trustee Corrigan.
Second made by trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Would you like to say anything, Greg, while you're there, sir?
Well, Mayor Corrigan, thank you for the opportunity, and again, for Mike, and more importantly, for Fred Relle, because Fred, Fred put me in contact with the village. So I want to appreciate all the people that got me involved here and the opportunity that the board's given me, and I won't let you down, I promise.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do have one question about this change and everything. I know Mr. Genito often has been sort of the IT head as well for the village. Will you be taking over that role as well, or?
Yeah, it's going to come down to how I'm saying, Mike thinks I can handle it, absolutely. Yeah, as you, as you know, Mayor Albert, um, Mayor Albert.
Thank you, Mike. I mean that truly, thank you.
As you know, yes, I do many other things in the village besides the treasury work. But for the consulting part of it, yes, I'll stay on for the IT in particular. We're also getting a new telephone system, that'll be part of it. I know the village clerk is working on records management project, that's quite extensive. I'll be assisting with that. So there's a lot of other things besides, again, assisting Greg and moving aboard. You know, Greg has some great experience, several years in both a town of Stony Point and about 13 or 15 months in his village of Spring Valley. He also has the advantage of having worked with the same software system that we use for finance. So there's a couple of nice pluses there in terms of him just moving right into the position. But of course, with any organization, you have your own methods, the people that you deal with, you have to get to know who does what. And Greg has already come in for a couple of days to see how we operate. And as he's seen, you know, everybody he's met, as I have, have great personalities, are great people to work with, and it's just a great place to work in. So yes, I will be here to handle things, and if there's additional questions, of course. And as I said, he's got my cell phone, as does the village board, and I do mean it. I mean, if somebody has to call me 24/7, it doesn't matter. I mean, and I don't say that as a joke. There was one trustee a long time ago, Jack Clifford, that actually called me at 2:45 in the morning to ask a question. But he was having a good time at the time and decided to have me be part of it. Great guy, though, Jack. So anyhow, but seriously, if you do have to reach me, you know. And the other thing too is they're going to allow me to keep the email, but I'll have a different signature on the end of it, for Suffering, since there's so many things that interact, and since the email is what I coordinate and manage anyway, so.
And obviously, you keep the job of working on the coup against me with Steve to make him mayor.
Keep my inside.
Since you did a Freudian slip on that one.
Wasn't really a slip.
For the record, I'm, for the record, I'm only running for trustee reelection this November.
So it has to be, it's always family. All right. At this point, I'd like to, village attorney too, was an issue, an item?
Yeah, good evening. We received a petition for a zone change amendment to the zoning law for 37 Washington Avenue to a transit-oriented district. The Board of Trustees, under the case law, has the ability to refuse to hear it, to sit on it, or if they want to further proceed with it, to comply with the requirements in the zoning law, which would be to refer to the planning board, village planning board, as well as to the Rockland County Department of Planning. And zoning law also says for the village attorney for review, and in addition, any other village employee or agency, which in this instance, I think would be the planning consultant. So the resolution refers the zone change petition to those agencies and also requests that the planning board be the lead agency for compliance with the State Environmental Quality Review Act. As you probably know, anything of this magnitude require compliance with the State Environmental Quality Review Act, which means after various impacts are analyzed, it has to be determined whether or not it might have a significant impact on the environment. If the planning board, if their ultimate lead agency determines that it won't, then they can issue a negative declaration, and that ends the seeker review. If they think it might, then it requires an environmental impact statement. So again, the resolution refer to those various agencies and request that the planning board be the lead agency.
Okay, so just so you understand what that property is, that's 37 Washington Avenue, the old nail enamel factory. They have come to put apartments on that piece of property there. We, the village board has talked to them, you know, individually, not more than two trustees at a time, so they have an idea. But they would go before the planning board then, and then also the ZBA, and then at that point, it would come back to the village board, and the village board would decide if we wanted to give them the zone change at that point. And that, that's where that property, that's where that's at right now. So it goes to the different, the planning board first, and they'll, they'll have their recommendations, the ZBA have their recommendations, and that's where the process is. The process is starting, but nothing's guaranteed as of this, as of right now. So can I please have a motion to refer the petition to Suffering WA LLC for a zone change for property located at 37 Washington Avenue, Village of Suffering, to a transit development district, and the Village of Suffering planning board, the Rockland County Department of Planning, the village attorney, and the village planning consultant for their review and recommendation. Motion, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by trustee Osborne. Can I get a second, please?
Trustee Ho.
Second made by trustee Ho. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor, I have a question about that, just so I understand a little better as well.
Yes.
If, if, let's say that they're granted the zone change at some future point in time.
Right.
What does that give them the ability to do relative to if they're not granted that? In other words, would they still be able to build any?
They could say, they could say what they are, which is a warehouse.
I see.
They could preserve that right.
Yeah, and in the meantime, if the zone change is granted, they still have to get site plan approval. A lot of those things are going to be up fronted on any application, because they're all very relevant to the determination under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. But again, if they do get the zone change, they're still going to need a further approval from the planning board.
Okay, but they can't, they can all, they cannot build apartments without the zone change.
Without us, without us.
Well, you, you are...
I understand.
Without this board, and chances are that at some point, they'll need four votes, you know, because of, that's how it goes.
Yeah.
So yes, we're not, we're not by no means there.
Thank you, I appreciate the clarification.
They have a lot of things to do, like as environmentally, traffic studies, there's a lot of work that they, they're going to have in there. We're just, we're just getting a motion in play, and then later on, we'll actually make a full decision, huh? We're just...
And there will be a lot of material and reports developed before the planning board because of their requirement to comply with the State Environmental Quality Review Act before it comes back to the board for trustee. There's certainly going to be traffic studies and all the other relevant planning studies.
Okay, thank you. Fire department, please.
Good evening, mayor and village board. I have three items on the agenda for tonight. First and foremost, accepting Federico Hernandez as a new member in the volunteer host company, number one.
I want a motion to the village board to feed accept Federico Matadamas Hernandez as a new member of volunteer host company with the approval of the village attorney and also the time involved to actually put him on the insurance, which Terry had mentioned also. So Terry will give the, the board's going to take a vote now, and then Terry will give us the final approval, huh?
Okay.
Okay, so a motion for that, to hire Federico Matadamas Hernandez?
Motion trustee Albert.
Motion made by trustee Albert. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second made by trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Just for clarification, it was Federico without, without the R.
Excuse me?
It's Federico without the R.
Okay.
Just for clarification.
So every time I say, I say Federico without the R.
Federico. Gotcha. Secondly, we're requesting authorization to attend the Pearl River Fire Department wet down on September 14th.
I have a motion to authorize the Suffering Fire Department to go to a party, I mean, I apologize, to attend the Pearl River Fire Department wet down on September 14th, 2024. Motion, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by trustee Osborne. Second, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Second made by trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
And we had another one too, right?
Yes. Lastly, I'd like to...
Party month.
Request authorization for the fire department to attend the Tappan Wet Down on September 28th.
Authorize, authorize, okay. Have a motion authorizing Suffering Fire Department to tap, to attend the Tappan Fire Department wet down on September 28th, 2024. Motion, please?
Trustee Ho.
Motion made by trustee Ho.
Second.
Second made by trustee Albert. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, so have a good time.
Thank you.
Have a good time. I slipped, I'm sorry. I couldn't have done that purposely. Grant writer Fred Relle, please.
Good evening, mayor and board. Mayor, if I hear anything about a coup, I'll let you know.
What's that?
If I hear anything about a coup, I'll let you know. I just want to bring you up to date on parking lot A. That was, we got a grant to repave that, and it's being done right now. The drainage had to be done first, and that was completed in the beginning of August. But we had to let the actual area where the drainage was installed settle before we actually put the asphalt on it. Also, the bus shelter, which is right in front of parking lot A, was redone by the county and completed last week, which was part of the project, to make it ADA compliant now. It's planned on having that parking lot actually paved at the end of September. Also, I just want to say a few words about Michael Genito. You know, I've worked with him for 10 years here. He's always very professional, very, very honorable, and if you ever have a question, he always takes his time to explain it thoroughly, which is always good. He dumbs it down for me, in other words, so that's great. Also, I miss getting the emails at 5:00 in the morning from, from you, you know, 5:00 and 6:00 in the morning, asking about a project, and, but I'm glad to hear that you're going to be staying on for a couple of, a couple of months at least, and so it's going to be great. So that's it.
Well, it sounds like you're in on a coup too. That's what I heard today. Thank you, Mr. Relle. Police department, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and board members. On the month of August, the police department responded to 984 calls for service. Last month's board meeting, I'm sure you all recall, I briefly spoke to you about the department's ongoing reaccreditation assessment. Last week, we had a representative from the Department of Criminal Justice Services at our station to conduct the onsite assessment. Happy to report to the board that we're being recommended for reaccreditation once again, which will cover us for the next five-year cycle. I would also like to, you know, once again, recognize Lieutenant Martinez, Sergeant Adams and Samora for all the hard work they put into the program. It is a lot of work, they did a great job, the assessor was highly, highly impressed with their work. So I just want to make sure that you're all aware of, you know, the amount of time and effort that they put in. I'd also like to thank the board and the Suffering community for their support. Without the support and the resources that we receive from the board, I can tell you maintaining accreditation would not be possible. It's, it's far too big of a task. So I do want to take the time on behalf of the police department to thank the board for all of your support. And that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
No, I just, I just want to point out that I also, I also met with the assessor, you know, towards the end of the, towards the end of the review, and, you know, pretty much she, she spelled out pretty much that we passed with flying colors, as they say, all right? There's only about, about 190 out of 500 departments that actually are accredited. I mean, my numbers might be off here.
Yeah, I think it's 123 or something.
Yeah, 100 some out of, out of 500 and some, yeah. So, so it, it, there's, and, you know, it's good, because it keeps you up to date on all the different policy and everything that goes on. And she also recognized, the assessor, that, and even the chief explained to her how this board is very supportive of the police service in the village, and how we, you know, give them the, the, the tools they need to do their jobs. So it was good for the village, good for the residents, good for the police department, and just to keep it a safe community as best we all can. So thank you to yourself, chief, and to your staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Kathy, please?
Recreation.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, village board. So a few things that we have coming up. Wednesday, September 11th, we will be having the 9/11 remembrance ceremony in the parking lot here in front of Village Hall at 6:30. And then we will be using the Lafayette Theater parking lot for people to be part of the ceremony. There will be a barbecue across the street after the ceremony, so we look forward to having that. The Suffering Street Fair will be on the 15th, Sunday, September 15th. That's from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And Suffering Spirit Day, Pride of America, is going to be a two-day event this year. Saturday, the 28th, we will be having the fireworks, starting at 6:30, and then the fireworks when it gets dark. We will be having on Lafayette Avenue on Sunday, September 20th.
What about Saturday? We're going to have hot dogs, we're going to give out hot dogs too, on Saturday night. And for all the kids, we're going to have the light Twizzlers down there, flying in the air, showing our, showing our pride. That's, that's new, that we added. And instead of a band, we're going to go to a DJ with the lights to bring the spirit up down there, okay? So, thank you.
Perfect explanation, mayor. And then on Sunday, the 29th, from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM, we're going to be having activities on Lafayette Avenue. There will be bands, there will be restaurants open, there will be a lot of activities. We have our Jumpy Castles, we're going to premiere them. Over by the gazebo, we're going to have Kurt Gallagher, the children's concert that we have every year. He's going to be doing a performance on the lawn. So we've got a lot of fun things for residents to come down to the Village of Suffering and, and see us, so we're looking forward to that.
We have about six or seven bands so far that are booked. I just got a call from, I don't know if you know the gentleman, Rich Myers, called me before I came in. We got that gentleman who, Wayne... Cobain, yeah, he's a, he's actually, he's actually a Grammy award winner singer. He's great with his whole group. We got another group called Charlie, I'll think in a second.
Kickstart Charlie.
Kickstart Charlie, who's also great, plays all over the place. And, and just, just the Red, the Red Band we have.
Singing Red.
They're great. And we also have Elvis Presley coming. I called him down there south, he's coming up, so we had Elvis Presley walk in the streets. And we got a few surprises coming up. We have the fire department to be down the street, as how they're so supportive. And I'm slowly but surely working on a little, some, to get some cars there, like a little car show. It doesn't have to be extraordinary, just quality, little quality car show there. So there's a lot of things going on, a lot of excitement. We felt this year, after talking to everyone, that this is having a little tougher time this year, huh? So we figured we'd bring the, like a wet down. We figured we'd bring the party to the businesses, instead of going there. So that's kind of where that, that idea is from, and we'll have a schedule with the bands and whatnot, all right? Thank you, Kathy.
And then the last thing that we have is we're going to be doing Broadway. So for anyone that's looking forward to seeing Aladdin, tickets are on sale, they started this morning, and it's $145 a ticket. That includes a ticket to the show and a bus here from Village Hall, takes you into the city, you see the show and come back, and Aladdin will be an exciting show to see for families, so we're looking forward to that.
Very good, Kathy.
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
At this point, I'd like to make a motion to open up the public comment period. A motion, please?
Motion trustee Albert.
Motion made by trustee Albert. I got a second, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Second made by trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Anyone in the public have any comments, you want to welcome or come up? Being there's no public comment, I'd like to make a motion to close the public comment period.
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan. I got a second, please?
Second trustee.
Second made by trustee Ho. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Department of Public Works, please.
Charles So Wiki. Good evening. Item A, authorizing the promotion of Daniel S. Horton from auto mechanic one to auto mechanic two.
Danny Horton's a, is a guy down there, he's actually, you know, went to Suffering, went to Suffering as a Suffering kid, you know, kid, his mother, you know, still lives there. And, and, you know, he's always there whenever he needs something fixed, he's always there to jump right in, always be helpful and everything, and he's, he's deserving of this promotion. So I'd like to make a motion promoting Daniel Horton from auto mechanic one to auto mechanic two, please?
Joe Corrigan.
Motion made by Joe Corrigan. I got a second, please?
Second trustee Albert.
Second made by trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.[1667.68]
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, accepting the retirement of Stanley Dubrinsky.
Stanley actually left in June, but we didn't, we didn't do that yet, so, and then we're, the next motion's going to be to hire him back on, as an independent contractor of 18 hours a week, because he has, he has, he has that license that's good, too, and all his knowledge from all the years he was here. So can I have a motion, accepting the retirement of Stan Dubrinsky?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by trustee Osborne. Can I get a second, please?
Second trustee.
Second made by trustee Hope. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, as the mayor had indicated, item C, authorizing the mayor to negotiate an independent contract with Stanley Dubrinsky.
As I just explained before, I have a motion for, to, for independent contract with Stanley Dubrinsky. Motion, please?
Motion trustee Albert.
Motion made by trustee Albert. Can I get a second, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Second made by trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, item C, I'm sorry, item D, purchase of a FESA 2024 RAVO R5 street sweeper through Sourcewell.
Okay, we have an old street sweeper here, which, it can go, it goes, since I came back in office, we actually put it on the road two days a week, Mondays and Fridays downtown. But really, it doesn't do well, travel too far distances, it's a 2009, and we're going to keep it, but I think these residents deserve to have a street sweeper that can go through their neighborhoods, and, you know, different neighborhoods, different days, you know, and like, almost like a constant setup of schedule for it, so we can do, do all the neighborhoods, too. So this is a, this is, there's a great model that's out there, other municipalities recently have, have used them, I've actually went down to NIAC and looked at theirs, and it's a, it can also clean out the storm drains for you, it has a weed, a weed cutter attachment, it's really modern day, and it's a, it'd be a good tool to use, and they have it in stock, and we'll have it within a, in a couple of days. So we'll take it, we'll buy it right out of our reserve, out of our savings account, okay?
How much is it?
So can I get a motion, please, authorizing the purchase of a FESA 2024 RAVO R5 street sweeper from Northeast Sweepers and Rentals Inc. pursuant to the Sourcewell bid.
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan. I got a second, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Second made by trustee Osborne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Item E, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Quest for Professional Services consisting of environmental testing services for asbestos on the roof of the village hall in the amount of $5,274.
Okay, we, this board has determined that we need a roof on this building, you know, due to, due to what they call leaks in America, so, but before we can do that, we have to get someone to tell us where, to evaluate all the asbestos on the roof. So that's what this is for, and then, you know, Charles was up on the roof with the gentleman, you know, this week, and then we'll be better positioned to do that, so we can do the roof, and we can do the top of the facade also. The idea is to do the roof and the facade of the building, because one can hurt the other, and, and it just, you know, this is part of history here, this building, so only certain people had the pleasure of going to fifth and sixth grade here, learning a lot, okay? Myself. Fred raises hand, but I don't believe him. But, so can I get a motion, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Quest for Professional Services? Motion, please?
Motion trustee Albert.
Motion made by trustee Albert. Can I get a second, please?
Second trustee.
Second made by trustee Hope. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now this is myself here, okay? Trustees, please. Joe, anyone have anything to say?
Yes, I would like to bring a resolution. Resolution number for 2024, a resolution naming the athletic fields known as the Suffolk Ballfields and buildings as the Tom Curley Athletic and Recreational Complex in memory of Tom Curley. Be it enacted by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Suffolk as follows. Whereas Tom Curley was a Suffolk police officer for more than 20 years, and whereas a police officer, Tom Curley served as a youth officer, and also forged the surge of the drug abuse by serving with the Rockland County Drug Task Force. And whereas, in addition to his service as a youth officer, Tom Curley also served the youth of the Village of Suffolk as a Little League coach, a member of the Board of Directors Suffolk Little League, as a coach Suffolk Little League team at Kukulo Tournament, including its running of the Tournament of Champions, and his promotion and involvement with the Dare basketball tournaments. Whereas, Tom Curley also served as a community as a member of the Knights of Columbus, and whereas, Tom Curley tragically died on December 15th, 2001, after finishing his tour as a Suffolk police officer. And whereas, the Board of Trustees is desirous on recognizing the contributions of Tom Curley and honoring his memory. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Suffolk that the village is honored to name the area known as the Suffolk Ballfields and buildings thereon, generally located in the vicinity of Ridge Ave, Ramapo Avenue, Pat Malone Drive, and Ed Fagan Drive, the buildings thereon as Tom Curley Athletic and Recreational Complex in memory of Tom Curley, and be it further resolved that the Village of Suffolk is authorized to purchase and erect appropriate signage in memory, to memorize his memory. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, trustee Osborne.
I'll second it. Trustee Albert.
Thank you very much.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Very important thing that we did to remember. Most have passed.
I don't know how many of you knew Tom Curley or not, I know, look in the audience, I know Fred did, I don't know if the gentleman over there did. He was actually, he was actually my brother, my older brother. Grew up in the same room together, back from where I lived in, I was born in Brooklyn, and I lived in the Bronx, I lived in Queens, and we came to Suffolk, huh? Our first paper route was in Hillburn, New York. We get our papers, and we walk up to Hillburn and deliver our papers there, huh? And Tommy was, if I'm not mistaken, he was a coach of our fire chief now, too, back then, way back then. He recently sent me a picture, but the fire chief won't let me give the picture out, so, but I might anyway. I never been, I know Joe Hunt knew him way back when, but Tommy was just a good guy, a good-hearted and a good-spirited person, and I'm honored, my family's honored, and I thanked his board for this.
It's our honor.
And thank you very much, huh? Go on to the next.
It's our honor, mayor.
Thank you, Joe. At this point, trustees, anything else to say, any other issues, any others to say?
Just my dad's want to say his brother also would help me, I was a dare officer obviously at the time, way back, and, you know, bringing us into my dare system, he's getting pissed a little bit, but your brother helped me with everything, Mike, and he also, after 9/11, we took a large contingency of supplies to the first responders at 9/11, and your brother was one of the guys that went with me down to Ground Zero to take the stuff down, and did a lot of work that day, came up, worked in the midnight, stayed all day, we took truckload and truckload down, so I don't, I don't even know if he knew that, just want to let you know he did, so.
I was aware.
He did a lot of work for us.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, mayor section, I'd like to, a resolution, Bobby Conklin, he's a, he's our ticket guy, gives the tickets in the parking, and, you know, he's been there for years, no raise, he's not, you know, in the union, so I'm giving, I'm giving Bobby a raise for his work and dedication in the parking department, so a resolution increase, I need a motion increasing the hourly rate of pay for Robert, Robert Conklin, please. Motion, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan. Second, please?
Second trustee Albert.
Second made by trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And also, I, since we made Adam Gordon the assistant building inspector right now, with the intention of, you know, maybe making him full-time at a certain point here, we need a fire inspector, so there's a gentleman named Larry Vogel, who, he was the fire chief in the county, he's a Suffolk village resident, and he had actually put application, he had interest, so, you know, I interviewed him, and he's waiting for some approvals from the county, and then, then he'll, he'll join our team as a, as a fire inspector, with someone who cares about the community and understands the, from the angle of the residents and from the first responders also. So can I have a motion, appointing Larry Vogel as part-time fire inspector and confirming the mayor's appointment by the Board of Trustees? So it's my appointment, and you'll be confirming it, so the board confirm it, so motion, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan. I get a second, please?
Second trustee.
Second made by trustee Hope. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.